Would you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on our agenda is citizen comments. I see we've had one individual sign up. Kathy Tagway Aturi?
Tagway.
I'm sorry, I knew I was going to blow that. Come on up, please. If you would, please state your address and name for the record. We have them, put them right here.
7661 Fulmer Drive in Dublin. So while I'm here, I want to know if the City of Dublin's doing anything to outlaw the use of plastic bags by retail merchants. I know there's many cities considering that or have done that so far. Even City of Columbus is looking into it, and I wanted to know what City of Dublin's doing about it.
We currently have not been looking into that.
Would that be something the city might look into? I don't think I need to state all the environmental issues concerning plastic bags, clogging water rays, filling up landfills, yada, yada, you know, injury to wildlife. But I was wondering, since there's so many cities that either outlaw them entirely and use just paper, or people have to use cloth bags, and Dublin's a green community, if we're doing anything about it.
Well, it is something that we can look into, and we'd have to work with our businesses and get feedback and input from them as well. But yeah, it's something that we can look into, and also any research or information that the City of Columbus is currently working on, we can meet with them and get their information as well.
Okay. So what would be a good way for me to follow up with that, to see how it's progressing? Contact person or just come to meetings? I sent an email, but nobody replied, so that's why I thought I'd come. Is there any other way to get ahold of people to see what's going on?
You can contact me in the city manager's office, and we'll follow up.
Okay, great, thanks.
I think it might be something interesting, and certainly there are a lot of communities, and I would be personally interested in this. I realize the environmental impact, but I think the key is to have it be a regional effort, so that it's, you know, the entire central Ohio region, and that way we're all working, you know, together as opposed to, you know, you can have them in Hilliard, but you can't have them in Dublin.
It would be, that would be ideal. It'd be nice if Dublin could lead the effort, since we are progressive and green and, you know.
I don't disagree.
So.
Two things that come to my mind, in terms of the regional aspect, you might talk to William Murdock, who is the executive of MORPC.
Okay.
And they have an environmental department that might be interested in pursuing it at a regional level.
Okay.
And also, would it be something that's appropriate to have our Community Development Committee of Council, you know, work with the staff on?
Yeah, I think the community development, or if council would want the Community Services Advisory Commission to work on it, I think there's a number of options that we can, we can look at.
Yeah, I think that I'd rather leave it at a council level, and then the council committee could invite in yourself or anyone else to explain, you know, different things. So maybe we could do that. I know John's not here tonight, and he chairs that, but give him a little bit of work, since he's not here.
Maybe Marcia, you can get back to us next time with some thoughts and ideas, and then certainly we can come up with a motion for, for one of our committees to, to address the issue.
Okay, thank you.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. That's all that signed up for citizen comments, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. I would ask if there's any council member requesting an item be removed. And I'll certainly accept a motion to, if not, then I'll accept a motion to approve the set of items.
Slow move.
Second.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mayor Keen, Mayor, gosh, Vice Mayor Luck lighter?
No.
Oh, Vice Mayor Gerber, another on my team tonight.
Okay, I'll say yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Okay. What's next here? You got me all flustered, Anne.
You're on the second page.
Second page here, second reading.
Ordinance 10714, declaring the improvements to certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, establishing a municipal improvement tax increment equivalent fund, providing for collections, deposit, or service payments into that fund, specifying public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcels, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to the Dublin City School District and the Toll's Career and Technical Center.
All right. Good evening, members of council. We are requesting the establishment of a new tax increment financing district. It would be located at the intersection of Innovation Drive and Emerald Parkway. As you have likely read in the newspaper, five nines digital with expedient data centers is one of their main tenants is going to be developing at that corner. This is a non-school TIF that we would be establishing, and we would expect that the service payments received within this area will go to a number of public infrastructure improvements that are outlined within the TIF ordinance, including intersection improvements at Emerald Parkway and Shire Rings, Shire Rings in Wilcox, Shire Rings in Avery, Emerald Parkway and Innovation Drive, and burial of our overhead utility lines. As with any TIF that's established, I think it's important to note that the base value is still distributed, the taxes generated on that base valuation is still distributed to all of the entities that are recipients of property taxes.
Okay. Any council questions or discussion? Anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Okay, very fine. Can you call the roll?
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Okay, so approved. Ordinance 108-14.
Declaring the improvement at certain parcels of real property to be of public purpose and exempt from taxation, establishing a municipal improvement tax increment equivalent fund, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments into that fund, specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcels, authorizing make-whole compensation payments to Jonathan Alder, local school district, and the Toll's Career and Technical Center.
Angel?
Similar to the prior ordinance, we are requesting the establishment of a tax increment financing district on city-owned West Innovation job-ready sitelands. It would encompass 96 acres that are currently under the city's ownership, as well as two parcels, pardon me, that are owned by utilities. The service payments in these areas would be used to fund a number of improvements to that were outlined in your 2015 through 2019 CIP, where the West Innovation in, in the site improvements, as well as off-site improvements. This, as well as a non-school TIF, and the service payments, all of the improvements are outlined within the TIF ordinance.
Okay, very fine. Any council questions or discussion? Anne?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Okay, so approved. Okay, introduction, first readings, ordinance 114-14.
Adopting amendments to sections 153.057 through 153.066 of the City of Dublin codified ordinances to amend the Bridge Street District zoning regulations.
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of councils. I have a brief presentation tonight. If you have any particular questions, I'd be happy to go into greater detail, but I'll keep it high level for now, so please let me know. Again, thank you for the introduction. This is a request for a zoning code amendment for the Bridge Street District zoning regulations. As council is likely aware, these Bridge Street regulations are part of the overall zoning code. They consist of sections 153.057 through 153.066 of the zoning code. The majority of the zoning code amendments that are proposed, it's a lengthy packet, many of them are more technical and clerical. As council knows, the original zoning regulations were adopted in spring of 2012, so since that time, we've had a chance to have a couple of projects go through the process. We've had a chance to identify where some clarifications are appropriate, or other modifications should be considered. So some of the more significant modifications are one that I'll draw attention to, is we did add a new section in what are the site development standards for walkability standards, to again place some emphasis on the desire for pedestrian circulation and activity to be central, a central focus of creating development plans. In addition to the text amendments, we also have an updated Bridge Street District street network map. This is included as part of the Bridge Street District code, and is, has been updated consistent with the thoroughfare plan that was adopted by city council last year as part of the community plan update. There's also a minor technical amendment to the Bridge Street District Sawmill Center Neighborhood District graphic, really just to make sure that the graphic coincides with the actual zoning district boundaries, so really nothing substantive with that. And again, just a little bit of background, once we finished the, once the code was adopted last, back in 2012, we obviously had some cases go through the process, and it was really last year that we kind of started the comprehensive update to the code, beginning with the amendments to the root view and approval procedures last fall, council adopted, and then working with Planning Commission, Architectural Review Board, and Administrative Review Team over the past few months to kind of wordsmith and work on the actual text of the provisions, culminating in a Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation to city council on Wednesday, October 29th. As part of the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, they did recommend approval to council for their first reading this evening, with actually two conditions. There were a few last-minute text amendments that we have incorporated since that meeting, and that is in the version of the code before council this evening. But there are a few other topics that they did want to bring to council's attention, so we did provide the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission's discussion, as well as highlight those items in the memo before council this evening. Those relate to actually size-limited uses, housing diversity, structural soils, and tree canopies. So just very briefly, I'll kind of cover each of those topics for consideration. First of all, with the structural soils, their hand, that particular topic is how street trees are intended to be planted throughout the Bridge Street District, and we did talk with the Planning and Zoning Commission about developing a specification that would kind of detail out how that should happen. So I think that one, that particular item is something that we can work through pretty, pretty thoroughly. Similarly, with tree canopies, long street trees throughout the Bridge Street District, as we're working through the streetscape character guidelines, we've talked a lot about that with council recently, that's another topic that we can address through that particular process. Planning Commission did raise a desire to see kind of strong, consistent tree canopies on streets throughout the Bridge Street District. In terms of the size-limited uses, the commission, the size-limited uses and housing diversity relate more to overarching kind of planning considerations, and relate less to the zoning code amendments that are before the council this evening. So again, they would like to bring this before council as consideration for a future zoning code amendment. So again, with the size-limited uses, the commission expressed some concerns with the amount of residential projects having been proposed, and the applications having come before council and the Planning Commission recently, and believing that there is some inconsistency with the intent of establishing a diverse range of uses throughout the Bridge Street District. So that is something that they wanted to explore further. And similarly with housing diversity, making sure that we have a range of both rental, as well as for sale, different sizes of housing products, and things of that nature. So again, those are detailed further in the memo, as well as the minutes, but if there are any particular questions, I'd be happy to answer those further. So with that brief summary, we are recommending approval of the, of ordinance 114, 14, the zoning code amendment for the Bridge Street District regulations at the second reading, public hearing on December 8th, and feedback on the items discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Okay, very fine, thank you. Comments, questions, thoughts?
I have a, would like some more clarification on the size-limited uses category you spoke of, and the housing diversity. Because what we have in front of us doesn't necessarily seem consistent with your verbalization about their position.
Sure.
So it sounds as though, on the size-limited use, that they're concerned about both the numbers of apartments in a building that we've seen so far, and that it's not a mixed-use building, which is what we have been talking extensively about in the Bridge Street area. Now, I don't know that we were talking about it for the totality of the area, but what has come forward at this point has been straight apartments.
Sure. Yes, that, that has been the concern at this point, that it has been larger residential projects. And again, to your point about the idea of the Bridge Street District being a mix of uses that will ultimately allow for the reduction of vehicular trips, allowing things to be more accessible by bike or on foot, they do have some concern that right now just apartment projects isn't what they would define to be mixed-use. Now, we did indicate that we knew that there is an immediate demand for a significant amount of urban residential housing. We knew that back in 2009, when we did the initial, initial visioning for the Bridge Street District. But they did have concerns that the projects that were coming forward were quite large. And we did also explain that functionally, the projects are limited by, as I noted in the memo, in three kind of principal manners. That's limited by the block size requirements, as well as parking requirements. They're functionally limited by how much they can actually, they are still required to park the projects, as well as maximum building height requirement. So those three kind of working in conjunction do, to some degree, already limit uses, they just don't place a density cap on those, on those projects.
So what are the formal projects that have come in that you're referring to?
Well, I think the ones that have been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, there's the Edwards Project at the Dublin Village Center that has not moved forward at this time. There's the taller flats Casto Project, kind of into the interior of the Bridge Street District, and then the Bridge Park East Project along Riverside Drive.
But the Bridge Park East, I thought, was mixed-use.
There, there is. There is a mixed-use component to that.
Right, okay. Which is where perhaps, on the schematic anyway, that we sort of see the mixed-use, because it's visible to the public, I mean, I suppose, more. And we don't know what's going to happen with the Edwards Project, because I think that did have a little mixed-use in one side of it, didn't it?
There were opportunities for that, yes, yes.
Yeah. You know, I think that, and keep, it is our intent in that area, was not to have just large apartment complexes, and that while there may be apartments there, which we knew, that the kind of living we're looking for is not what was built in the 70s and 80s of apartment complexes, like Sycamore is in that area. I mean, that's not what we're looking for either. So I think it's incumbent upon staff, as developers come forward, that we, you know, really try to influence that we need a mixed-use, and we need more interesting layouts of the properties and all, because the Casto Project, that was one of our concerns, was it had no, no interesting layout and use of the land. So, you know, I can, I certainly, now, I'm not sure this housing diversity, talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I think the way that some of the projects have been characterized, there's an impression given that they're all rental, for example, and, or all, you know, condo. And I think the commission has a desire to see, you know, a mix of rental and condo, and different unit sizes, to get a variety of different types of people living in the Bridge Street District. That was kind of the indication, based on their comments given at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I think we even have here at our dais, some information that Insight 2050 put out last week, and we've seen in the speakers we've had come over the last few years, talking about what the trends are, and what both younger generations, as well as empty nesters, are looking for, is not large places, really. They're looking to do a lot of their, maybe activities, let's say, whether they're recreational activities or whatever, more in the community that they live in, rather than in their living spaces. So I think that the conversations that we've seen anyway, with a couple developers that you've mentioned, have, and we've, we have toured their other areas in central Ohio that they've already built, they do have some level of diversity of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, that type of thing, but they're not the, the kind of living arrangements that have, in the past, been done. So is part of it that they're not recognizing those differentials of interests now of the population, or, and we don't, the market, of course, dictates whether it's rental or condo, not, and, you know, we saw even like the Schottenstein's property on Avery Road, Muirfield Avery, you know, it was intended, when it was built, 25 years ago, or whatever, to be condo, and the market didn't allow it at the time, so it became a rental, and now it's condo.
Right.
So it was able to make that conversion 20 years later. And those are just things that the market really dictates, not, not the government entity.
Yeah, we've, we've shared the information from the Vision Report and those initial studies, as well as the more recent Insight 2050 data.
Awesome, go ahead.
Excuse me, just, just to follow up on that point, if I'm not mistaken, what we've been told is that the lenders are reluctant to lend for condominium development at this point in time, too. So I mean, if there's, if there's no money for it, you know, that's not likely to happen, but, you know, my understanding is that these could be converted at some point in the future, you know, if trends change.
Right, yeah. Also, I noticed, you know, one thing that we've talked a lot about over the last few years, and what we were really trying to get at in the Bridge Street area, and why we set it apart from our other areas of the city, was to look at a review process that would be less timely than our other PUDs and other processes that were, you know, have greater familiarity. And I sort of didn't feel that the way this process was outlined was really going to provide us with that. And even, what was the last meeting, or the meeting before, we ended up having to do a development agreement in order to get at some of those issues, and we don't necessarily want to have to do that in all of them, but in light of the fact that we know we're going to have a number of agreements in this area due to infrastructure and other economic arrangements that need to be made, to really be helpful to the city in the build-out process, I guess I'd, I'd like to recommend that we have an amendment to this process that's in here. And I'd provide the language that the Bridge Street review process that we take, the council, takes the review of the basic plan stage in both development and site plans, when a development agreement, particularly when a development agreement with the city is part of the developer relationship that we're contemplating. And then we would direct that as to which direction it should go. Should it stay within the council for the process, or would we be giving it to ART, or to the Planning Commission, or any other commission that we might create at any point in time? So I guess I would make that as a motion for consideration.
Sarah, second?
I'm second.
Any discussion? Anne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner? I'm sorry, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Another thing that I should have included in that, but I forgot, I think that there wasn't a direct appeals process in this either, to council, is that correct?
That's correct. Appeals go to BZA first, and then it's a discretionary appeal to council.
So I think I would like to also recommend an amendment that they would come to city, the appeal would come directly to city council.
Okay.
And for us to be the reviewing body of determination at that point.
Is that a motion? Since we already passed the other one, then?
Please.
Is there a second?
Second motion.
I'll second that as well.
Any discussion? Anne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Luck lighter?
Yes.
Okay, Marcia, I can assume that we can take up the motion you just heard, the two motions you just heard, and also with the December 8th.
Yeah, I think based upon the, the direction given and the timeframe involved, we'll be able to provide any of the language changes that are necessary, and provide that report back to council for the December 8th meeting.
Okay, so very fine. So ordinance 11414, we'll have our second hearing on the December 8th council meeting.
I, I'm sorry, Rick. It seemed, I apologize. Were we going to have any more discussion about this? I mean, you know, Planning and Zoning Commission asked for feedback on at least these four items. I had some questions regarding signs. Do we just want to wait? Do we want to delay that till the next meeting?
We can.
I mean, I think we heard.
No, I can do it now.
I was, I had a couple comments, but I thought having
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do that now.
John and Tim, or John and Mike here might not be a bad idea for those conversations. So I was reserving my comments.
Well, I'm fine either way.
I, I wonder if there's something else that we might want brought back, though, on December 8th? I don't know, but that would get everything, you know, ready to go for the 8th, and then we could pass it as one.
That's what I was going to suggest. If there's anything else that you've read here that you want staff to go through and have ready for us on the 8th, and it makes sense to bring it up now.
Mm-hmm.
No, it just, I mean, with respect to the signs, I was, I was just, you know, reflecting on what I read in the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes, and I was just looking for some clarification, but I, I'm comfortable that I can get that clarification at the next meeting. I don't, I don't know that, you know, staff needs to go to any extra effort.
I mean, if there's any, anything specific that we can, that, that you can give us the, the information, then we can make sure that we do have the, the information next time.
I mean, I, I just, you know, I think that, and Amy, you were personally involved with the, with the discussion, of course, and staff. You know, and Amy, maybe you could, you know, enlighten us, you know, there seemed to be some concern regarding signs, and what point in time, you know, that a sign plan was presented, whether it was presented to staff, or whether it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was some reference to a master sign plan, I believe it was, and, and so anyway.
Yeah, that was, that was sort of an aside, well, compared, well, no, I guess it was, it was, it was part of the discussion, was, it came up primarily when we were looking at the Crawford-Hoing proposal, and the fact that, obviously, you're going to have a number of businesses, and you're going to have directional signage, perhaps, and then you're going to have, you know, the, the signage identifying the development per se, and then you would have, you know, the individual businesses. And when was that going to, or, you know, how was that signage package going to make it through? You know, are we going to be looking at individual businesses, or would it be better to have a master sign plan, and then those individual businesses would fit in after that? And then who was going to review it, and, you know, what those signs were going to look like? So I, I felt like we really didn't come to a full resolution on signage, and when, and where, and how that was going to be handled. And I think that there is still the, for me, anyway, the question of, you know, what are these signs going to ultimately look like? We had, at one point, looked at some really different types of signage that we thought, you know, some of them might be kind of cool to identify different types of businesses and so forth. There are certainly opinions about that amongst the Planning Commission, and then there's also, you know, the question of, well, how far out do we want to go? This is still Dublin. And, you know, quantity of signs, and how you're going to, and then wayfinding signs. So there was quite a bit of discussion about signage. I don't know that there was necessarily an agreement one way or another with regard to that.
So, did I miss that? Was that in this, these revisions, or is that something, a topic for another day?
Sure. The master sign plan process has been part of the regulations, although it did receive quite a bit of discussion at Planning Commission. We went through the code language. As Ms. Salee alluded to, they did talk quite a bit about when the sign plans should be required, and we did talk about how those really high mixed-use activity zones, that, you know, the, the areas that we're going to have throughout the Bridge Street District, they will be required. Those are in the shopping corridors, they will be required there. Elsewhere, when new buildings come through, one of the criteria as part of the building requirements is to show where signs are going to be on the building, so we don't run into, you know, being stuck with awkward locations to put signs on buildings, for example. But as far as, you know, individual signs for individual tenants, we've tried to get to a point where we can make the process easy for a business owner to kind of plug into the process and get a sign approved, balancing the desire for quality, imaginative design, and things of that nature. So as part of the amendments, we have included kind of ramped up construction quality details, material details, to kind of get a little bit closer to that direction, but that is, you know, the overall desire for, for, you know, innovative signs, it's really difficult to kind of codify that type of a thing. So that is, I think, kind of the, the challenge that staff is having, as far as coming up with code language to address that particular concern.
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a thorny issue, because you have
Yeah, it is, it's a thorny issue because you have, you know, it's sort of like you'll know it when you see it, kind of a thing. And I don't know, you know, how we get around that. I feel like, you know, Planning Commission, along with these other issues, you know, has some, has some heartburn.
One of the things that we've been working on with consultants is the wayfinding and making sure that from the city's perspective, not only just Bridge Street, but coming into the city overall. And then the same consultant has also been working with Crawford-Hoying and others that are involved. So we're looking at what kind of signage do we need from a wayfinding standpoint and an informational standpoint for the Bridge Street District, as well as the city in general, making sure that we identify parks in the same manner and the different amenities within the city. So as far as a timeframe on bringing something back for that, I'd ask Terry to see where we are on the completion of that.
I think just what you're looking for, how do these things integrate? Crawford-Hoying's retained the same consultant to do the master signage plan there as well because there'd be a lot of navigation to parking structures and those kind of things for folks as opposed to just businesses. So I think, I would think in the next, you know, 30 to 60-day timeframe, we'd be able to start to share with you some of the broader, broader citywide kinds of things that are being looked at. And I think Crawford-Hoying's going to then have a more unified master signage approach for you all to consider as well.
Okay, that makes sense because when I read through this, I didn't see any changes. I saw it in the P&amp;Z minutes discussion about signage, so it makes sense you'll bring it in 30, 60 days.
I guess it raised up to me, you know, something that, at least for me, is an important consideration. You know, with respect to, you know, wayfinding in public spaces, you know, I would support, you know, a higher level of regulation and consistency and so forth. But insofar as individual businesses are concerned, to the extent that we want this, you know, we're trying to create this unique environment, you know, I would support greater creativity. Having said that, you know, I'm not sure that I'm comfortable or that, well, I would expect many of my colleagues may not be comfortable with giving complete discretion, you know, to each and every applicant or individual business owner, you know. So what the minutes seemed to suggest to me was that the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, was asking, you know, will there be, you know, some level of review and at what stage and so forth? So I don't know. I guess that's going to come back to us later.
That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct, Marcia, that in 30, 60 days we'll get that?
Yeah, we'll have more information on the work that we're doing with the consultant overall.
Okay.
And then would things like the sign plan be part of the overall development that we would be talking about primarily Lee's motion? Or is this something that's going to be an ART-level discussion? I don't want an answer right now, but we need to know, you know, staff's recommendation on that process and how you would see this going forward. I think you know how we feel about signs.
I think she heard.
I think so.
Is there anything else you want to bring up tonight to help them in preparation for December 8th?
No, I think that Planning Commission is very much looking for some answers in terms of these size-limited uses, housing diversity. I think the structural soil issue. What I heard our staff saying at Planning Commission and what I heard my fellow commissioners saying, it seemed like there was agreement, though it didn't feel like there was an agreement. There was an agreement. I think everybody's got the same goal. And with regard to the tree canopies, there's a couple different ways you could go with it. I know Mr. Reiner has an opinion because I spoke with him about it on staff's approach versus, you know, some of our commissioners are really knowledgeable about trees and landscaping. But I guess, you know, there's considerable interest and anxiety about, you know, the number of housing units that we're getting and the fear that there is low-hanging fruit there, that, you know, developers are bringing in, you know, a lot of apartments and we're not going to end up with the mixed use that we want, but rather an apartment community, you know, more apartment communities. And so, you know, it's sort of a philosophical difference.
Yeah, okay. Well, maybe what's best, Marcia, maybe for the December 8th, maybe you can kind of vet these a little bit, maybe in paragraph form or something, so that we can, maybe we can have a little bit more discussion? Does that make some sense?
Yeah, and just, you know, I think ultimately, you know, we all need to be comfortable going forward.
Yep, right, I get it.
You know, in the one item, there was a memo that was put together a while back and might have been right before your goal-setting with regard to the residential development and what had been studied as far as the utilities and the transportation. And some of the concern, I think, that was raised early on was the number of units that were identified there. And those we used as very conservative so that we knew that the utilities and the traffic system, we were looking at the most, the highest level of potential development to make sure that the existing utilities or the, and the roadway system that we were proposing would be able to handle it. So I don't know if it would be helpful to bring that memo back because I think it had a lot of good information and talked about growth in residential units.
I think, to me, anyway, and we can, we'll talk about this, of course, more next month, but I mean, it seems to me like it's a little bit of a chicken and egg, you know, proposition. And, you know, this isn't going to work with 500 units. It's not going to work with 1,500 units. And, you know, if I'm a business or I'm a restaurant, I'm a dry cleaner or whatever, you know, I'm not, I'm not renting space in there, you know, to serve, you know, a couple hundred units. You know, so, I mean, I think all of council has expressed, you know, what we want as an overall mix within this development. You know, it's a question of, you know, when it becomes a part, you know, of the district. And, you know, I think that we need to create the mass, we need to create the population, which thereby creates the demand for services. You know, I think you need to view it from the businessperson's perspective, you know, and the risk that they're going to take, you know, if you're asking somebody to, you know. Otherwise, I think we run the risk of having a lot of empty storefronts, you know. And I don't think that's good for the district either. I mean, you know, for some certain period of time, and we've seen it in other places.
Well, Marcia, it seems to me that those materials that we did review before our retreat, maybe we can dust those off, look at those, and maybe we just simply restate those for the direction for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, we can provide that information again.
I think we're seeing, Tim, that this is how Columbus also approached it. They now have a significant amount of residential in place and you're seeing high street change now and more restaurants and small retail coming back in after they were emptied out. So I think this is pretty natural. I think we've had developers even say to us and some of the restaurant people who are interested in being in this area, that they first have to have people who are living there that will be coming there, you know.
Right.
So I agree with that. It's a timing issue and how do you, you know, how do you get that? I mean, so it looks like you're only building apartments, you know, when that isn't really what, within, you know, a couple years, you'll see the other restaurants and retail coming forward.
I think maybe, you know, some discussion about the evolution of the district and how we see that playing out over, you know, five, 10 years. And, you know, understanding also this is a 30-year vision, you know, or more for the district. Thank you.
Great, okay. Moving on, ordinance 11714.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Exact Holding North America Inc. to induce it to locate an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Okay, introduction. Okay, thank you. Colleen?
Thank you. Good evening. We have been working with Columbus 2020 and Jobs Ohio and Exact Software, which is a software development and technology company. They are based in the Netherlands and they do have six domestic locations in the United States. Excuse me. What we are proposing is a $10,000 location grant and a four-year, 10% performance incentive that would be tied to a seven-year lease. That incentive would be capped at $74,000 and we estimate that the city would net approximately 1.2 million over the seven-year term of that lease. Currently, the company would start with about 100 employees and would grow to about 115 by 2018. The company will be present at second reading to address more specific location questions. I know that there are several buildings that they are still considering, but I'm not at liberty to announce a final address.
That was the exact question I was going to ask, okay.
If I may, I, we're providing a, suggesting to have a $10,000 location grant. So I'm curious, what will that $10,000 get them?
It's a way to advance some of the incentive on the front end to allow for them to set up their operations here, getting a space set up for 100 new employees, a lot of the technology wiring that goes into that, furniture, moving everybody into that location.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Colleen, thank you. We'll look forward to hearing from you and meeting with them on December 8th.
Great.
Okay, next, resolutions, Resolution 90-14.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements pursuant to Section 8.04, Paragraph C, for the construction of certain fiber optic routes and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Columbus FiberNet.
Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Colleen?
Okay. Dana could not be with us this evening, so bear with me as I speak about Dublin without him here to back me up. As you recall, council has approved funding in the 2014 through 2018 capital budget for the deployment of our 100-gigabit fiber optic backbone. The deployment of this backbone will differentiate the city's optical fiber network from others. Resolution 9015 will provide the architecture necessary to overbuild certain portions of the city's existing backbone as it's depicted in the maps accompanying your staff memo. This overbuild will provide additional optical fiber capacity, giving us the necessary fiber to deploy this 100-gig capability network through Dublink. You'll recall several meetings ago, you did pass Resolution 8514. This resolution authorized the allocation of extra-capacity fiber to ORNET and other areas of the Dublink system. That action saved the city $360,000 in equipment costs because ORNET has agreed to provide equipment in exchange for some of the optical fiber as a trade. The combination of our overbuild and the equipment will now enable us to actually light up that 100-gigabit backbone within key office parks and provide a new research and education backbone. I'd like to emphasize that this build requires the extension of our optical fiber within the same conduit system as our existing Dublink fiber. Because the official company built and provides ongoing maintenance of the Dublink optical fiber and conduit system, we feel that it is in the best interest of the city to have them construct this build. Allowing someone else to overbuild within the same conduit, we feel, is too risky. And should something go wrong, frankly, official can better respond to any damages or disruptions that it could cause. We also feel that we're pretty confident that the cost per linear foot to overbuild this fiber is consistent with the market. So with that, we do recommend passing 9014, Resolution 9014, and I will attempt to answer any questions. I also have visual aids if you need to understand it a little bit better.
Okay. Any questions of council? Yeah, I don't pretend to understand what a gigabit is, but, you know, it's kind of interesting to see how this is, actually, it's fantastic to see how this has evolved since the late 90s. In fact, I was on CSAC at the time when Dana first brought this idea to all of us in the city. And it's just, it's remarkable, very innovative.
We're very excited. We feel like it will really bring a competitive advantage to some of our aging building stock.
I agree, I agree. I'm with that. Okay, Anne?
Ms. Saley? Mr. Luckleiter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
I guess.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Genesey-Zurker?
Yes.
Okay, very fine. Okay, now we move over to the other of our agenda and, let's see, it looks like we have a discussion regarding the proposed Riverside Drive, future John Shields Parkway pedestrian tunnel.
Yes. As a follow-up to some of the questions that have recently come up, we prepared a packet of information that was distributed to you on Friday to discuss the potential pedestrian underpass at the future John Shields Riverside Drive intersection. And as we previously referenced in the information that was distributed to council last week, we've had these discussions before, but we weren't able to find any place where we did bring it back to council, requesting direction from council for the installation of the underpass or what option with the underpass. So this is what we're bringing back this evening to have that discussion with council, if it's something that you choose to include in the project or not, and then what version if you do. In the past, we've been working with MKSK and in some of the earlier discussions, they had provided information on the pedestrian or the potential underpass, as well as some of the impacts on the greenway. And included in your packet, they did prepare and include three options for an underpass, two for underpass, different versions, and one option is to have no underpass included. And we also have other staff members here, Mandy Bishop, who's one of the consultants that we've been using, our engineering staff, Terry, and Darren, I would ask him to come up and provide information on some of our thoughts and discussion with regard to the tunnel and the information that's included in the memo for this, for the packet.
Okay. This is an overview plan that shows the street network for the Bridge Street District to orient you to where the tunnel is. This is I-270 along the northern border of the district, 161 to the bottom of the page here, and this is Riverside Drive moving through the center of the page. John Shields Parkway is an east-west street that's being proposed through the district. It has a planned greenway on the southern side of the road, and that greenway gave us an opportunity to look at where a tunnel might be located here under Riverside Drive. Again, the goal of the tunnel originally was to look at an alternative to get across Riverside Drive to better connect the eastern development to Riverside Park. The reason that the greenway along John Shields Parkway provides us that opportunity is that the tunnel is about 14 to 15 feet below street grade in order to get clear head height and to address the road cover that's needed on top of that. And to make up that 14 or 15 feet, you need a ramp or a stair or some combination thereof to do it. And the greenway gave us the real estate to best do that. So I'll go through the three options here. Option A, which is what's currently being developed in the plans, and let me orient you to this graphic, this is Riverside Drive along the bottom. The river would be off to the lower right over here, and this is John Shields Parkway, where it tees into Riverside Drive. So you can see that the tunnel would pass on a Riverside Drive here. This is where it outlets into the park. And this is an accessible route that is 5% that takes you down in a ramp and underneath. There's also a few stair connections here at the east and here at the west end for a little bit more convenient access, and then a path system that connects you back to the corner here. We've blocked in, this doesn't represent any specific development or architectural proposal, it's just to give you a sense of the proposed edge would be here along the southern edge of the green. You can see a little bit of the streetscape of Riverside Drive and John Shields Parkway here as well. So just some very quick dimensions, again, the entrance and exit to the tunnel is about 14 to 15 feet difference from sidewalk grade. The distance from Riverside Drive here to the edge of the tunnel system is about 200 feet. You can see its impact on the planned greenway here. This is option two, which still has the tunnel passing underneath. You can see the same outlet into the park here. This option removes the ramp and has a stair that takes you down. We have an accessible route at grade that takes you across and a way to get an accessible route that takes you from this location down into the park. So the accessible route as a function of the underpass is duplicated at street grade. We want to make sure we provide that at street grade as well. The biggest difference in this alternative is, again, that it frees up quite a bit of real estate here in the green in terms of how these buildings ultimately address that space. And then the last option has no underpass. And that gives us ultimately the most flexibility with how we address this corner in terms of site design and architecture, the most flexibility here with, as the park develops as well. So we'd be happy to answer any questions about those three alternatives.
Darren, I'm curious what your expert opinion is about this tunnel. We have sort of wrestled with tunnels over the past several years. We've built several of them at the request of neighborhoods. There's one really close to my home and hardly ever use it just because I, you know, just walk across it grade. It's not that terrifying to walk across at grade. That's not, that's in a very suburban environment here. You know, we anticipate a lot of activity on the street. On the one hand, I can't picture people using a dark tunnel. On the other hand, you know, it is another way, it's, you know, more comfortable perhaps for pedestrians or cyclists. I'm curious about your thoughts.
It's a great question. We've discussed this pretty rigorously with staff. I think that in Dublin, there's a history and a perception that those tunnels add some value and help people get across busy roadways. And that's if you, it's very hard to look at Riverside Drive today, and if you ask the average person, would you prefer to cross the street or go under the street? Well, of course, they're going to stay under the street. So what we're doing is we're looking ahead to the environment that we're planning to create, and that environment is much closer to things that you would see, for example, in downtown Columbus in some ways than it is to some of the suburban Dublin examples of tunnels. So I think of North Bank Park, for example, which is adjacent to the Arena District. So people that want to move from the Arena District to North Bank Park, cross three lanes of Spring Street and then five lanes of Long Street to get to that park, and it functions perfectly well. Even Columbus Commons, another downtown example, if you want to cross Third Street to get to Columbus Commons, it's five lanes. Broad Street's eight lanes, and 6,000 pedestrians walk across Broad Street every day in that area. So it's not just a function of how many lanes. I'm confident that when you create a great built urban environment and amenities that are on either side of the road, and you take the proper design of that intersection from an engineering, functional, and safety and aesthetic standpoint, that it will serve the needs to get across.
Is it going to be controlled ultimately with a traffic light?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Where is the pedestrian bridge dump-off? Is that, has that been determined on this side? Is that close?
It would be further to the south at where Bridge Park Avenue intersects. So it would be the next signalized intersection to the south of this.
So when we started out with the idea of having a tunnel, were we, had we just not transitioned in our thought process to what this roadway is ultimately going to be like? This is something that came up at Planning Commission. You know, ultimately, we want Riverside Drive. It will still function as a major north-south roadway, a roadway for, you know, traffic that's going to, you know, be commuting from point north to point south and not necessarily destination traffic. So it's still going to be very heavily traveled. But I think the hope is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, that we sort of calm the traffic, slow the traffic through this part of it?
That's correct.
And so how will we accomplish that so that pedestrians feel safe on the roadway?
There are two parts of that. I want to answer those in order. One of the reasons that I would answer that I think the tunnel may not be needed even though we're proposing it, is that we've learned quite a bit. When we look at it from a planning concept, and now we're evaluating the cost and benefits, where we are in the engineering, we see the cost of it, we see the impact on utilities, and we see the impact on how this corner develops here. I think it's a great and timely question for us to address. So I think that, I think it's very appropriate to reevaluate it now. What we're doing to help control traffic in terms of speed and volume largely has to do with the perception of the street. So we're using brick materials in the crosswalks to help a visual cue to motorists that there's a change material there. There's a little bit of texture to it as you move across it, so it's a cue that this is a pedestrian environment. We're working very hard to have street trees and landscape that's of a size, and we'll get to a maturity that that's going to start to create the perception of more of a city street and less an arterial that you pass through. Probably the biggest thing that we're doing to help create a more pedestrian environment here is the ability to put on-street parking on Riverside Drive. That is by far the tool that is going to calm traffic the most. You have maneuvering in and out of those spots, you have the, you have the visual aspect of people getting out of cars. It's a great cue and a great tool that's going to help minimize the speed and the behavior of the motorists through there.
What is the, are we still talking about a grade change for southbound versus northbound Riverside Drive?
Not at the intersection, but yes. As you move from John Shields south to Bridge Park Avenue, which is next signalized intersection, the southbound lanes dip a little bit lower and then come back up.
Gotcha. Is it possible to have any sort of pedestrian refuge in the middle there, or is that not feasible?
I think what's precluding us from doing that is, has to do with as we look for the turning movements of the type of vehicles, that they would potentially clip the ends of this. I don't know, Paul or Mandy, if you want to touch on?
Because nobody's going to be... You know, one of the things Darren mentioned, we've had a lot of discussion on this in the past week, there's been quite a bit in some meetings that were pretty interesting. And one of the concerns that we had was the southbound traffic on Riverside Drive. Going northbound, you're going to be in the more urban area, and you're going to feel like it's easier to cross than if you're trying to cross at John Shields based upon the southbound traffic coming down. And so one of the things that came up after we had our discussion last week was, we currently weren't looking at on-street parking north of John Shields, and maybe that's something that if we looked at adding on-street parking north of John Shields, so that as soon as you're coming into the district, there's on-street parking, that would send the signal as far as slowing down in its more urban area. So that was one of our main concerns, was the southbound traffic.
So it would be parking primarily for the people who are using the park?
Yes.
Yes.
That's right. So it'd be just off the, I'll try not to put this in anyone's eye, just off the page here to the north on the park side.
Is that going to reduce the travel lanes? Or is it going to be in addition to?
It would be in addition to the travel lanes.
The two southbound travel lanes, gotcha.
I guess in my view, you know, this would be distinct, you know, from our more traditional existing neighborhood tunnels, you know, that we're all accustomed to, and, you know, which we've experienced some mixed results, at least in the eyes of some council members, I think, relative to the expense and so forth. And, you know, I think it also depends on the location. You know, but I see this as something different. And, you know, I think it's difficult, at least it's difficult for me to imagine, you know, the future Riverside Drive street environment because of what we're used to today.
Sure.
You know, and the speeds at which cars travel and so forth. And so, you know, I think we're all pleased with the measures that, you know, we're going to develop here, you know, in terms of, you know, hopefully affecting driver behavior and so forth. But, you know, I think there's still going to be a certain number of people that, for whatever reason, you know, may be more comfortable using a pedestrian tunnel as opposed to at grade. I do have the concern that, you know, that we maintain the street level vitality that we're looking for, but I guess I'm hopeful that there'll be, you know, that there'll be enough vitality that, you know, that a pedestrian tunnel would not detract from it. And then, you know, the obvious consideration that, you know, we can't add a pedestrian tunnel after the fact. You know, I mean, we need to make that decision now, obviously. And then finally, you know, for me, you know, the cost is considerably less than what I anticipated. I, for whatever reason, I anticipated that it would be many times more, you know, than what it is. Frankly, I'm surprised. I hope that's a good number, you know, a reliable number, I should say. It really does surprise me given how many lanes of traffic that we would be going under. But nevertheless, you know, if we were to do this, I would favor the option B.
If I ask a question about the numbers, it says, the numbers that are in here says 401 to go under the road in 613 for the, is that the ramp configuration? So under the road doesn't include that extra 600,000?
The option that's currently, hold up here. The option that's currently in the plans is this one, which reflects those numbers. So the portion that is the 600,000 is this entry accessway, and then the actual structure itself that takes you under the road is 400,000.
So is it fair to say that option B is then 400,000?
The 400,000 would be the same in any option that spans under the road. The 600,000 is what would change if we modified this. This portion I'm circling here is the $600,000.
Okay, so if option A is a million, what is option B?
Option B, I looked at the stair cost for option B, or that are included as part of the ramp, it's about $52,000. So you could assume that there would at least be a $50,000 to $60,000 add-on to the 400,000.
The base 400,000, but not 600. I mean, that's amazing that the ramp is more than about 130% of the price of the tunnel.
Correct.
So, I'm sorry. So, option A is the million dollar one?
That's correct.
So then option B is how much in total?
It'd be approximately $460,000.
And option C is what?
Three.
Option C would eliminate all of, would be zero.
Oh, okay. So I'm confused then about what is this $613,000?
Acquiring all that property, I guess, that the ramp is on.
And the entry system costing 613?
The estimate includes excavation. It includes about 1,500 cubic yards of rock excavation in addition to just the soils. It includes a significant amount of concrete and, as well as structural stability rebar. So the cost, there's a lot of concrete, a lot of steel, a lot of excavation that feed into the ramping system cost.
So that would be in A and B?
In B, if you move, if you go into just a stair situation, Darren, thank you. In option B, you can see that Darren has just shown stairs in the depiction, and so the stairs for, EMT has itemized, line itemized, the stair cost in the $613,000. So I was able to kind of estimate that the stairs for an option B would be somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000. I kind of extrapolated from their cost estimate for option A is all, the only one we have a full detail for.
I think what we're trying to get at here is that trying to assign a dollar value with each option, what's the total cost of each?
Yeah, option A is the 1 million plus. Option B is the 400,000 plus the additional 50 to 60 for the stairs. So it'd be somewhere in the 460, 470 range.
Yeah, I think through the document, you start talking about some other numbers, and I think that kind of steered us away from the bottom line here.
So in essence, if I'm understanding correctly, between A and B, I mean, there's a significant amount of differential in cost, but it's just a matter of how you enter the tunnel?
Correct.
That's correct. Whether or not it's ADA accessible or not.
Well, so you're saying that in the option B, the ADA accessibility is on top, it's not going through the tunnel?
Correct.
It's, we have an accessible route at street grade in the option.
Right.
So the ramp in option A would be a good, you know, a positive redundancy, but a redundancy in that.
And that's a half a million dollars just to do that?
That's correct.
More than half, yeah. How many feet would this tunnel be?
About 150 feet, 145?
And then contrast that to some of our other tunnels, does anybody know? I'm trying to picture.
Werner Temple at Avery Road is around 160 or 170 in length.
Okay.
And who do you expect to be, would only people accessing the park use this tunnel? Or would, is it close enough that you could walk across the pedestrian bridge so that people living over here could walk to the library? They would use the tunnel, then they'd go use the pedestrian bridge, or is that too far of a walk?
No, I think that's one potential scenario, that if you wanted to go to historic Dublin, you could, and you lived in this portion of the district, you could use the tunnel, walk through the park to the pedestrian bridge, and then over. That could be a potential scenario.
I sense you kind of think it's starting to get to be a long walk.
No, I think that's a walk we hope and expect people to make.
Okay.
You know, part of my consideration, and by no means, I mean, you know, I just wanted to start the conversation, you know, but part of my consideration was the lack of assurance regarding the future character of Riverside Drive. You know, I know what we all hope it to be, and then it's also a matter of perception, you know, from the pedestrian's perspective, you know, the perception of their relative safety, you know, crossing, you know, at grade, you know, versus below grade.
Yeah.
You know, and again, price was a consideration because, for whatever reason, you know, I just imagine this costing, you know, several million dollars, frankly.
Yeah.
I'm not saying $400,000 is an inconsequential sum.
Right.
But relative to everything that we're doing here.
Darren, did I understand earlier that you mentioned that you are studying off-site or on-street side parking on Riverside Drive?
Yes, on-street parking on Riverside Drive, that's correct.
But you don't have those drawings for us?
You can see just a little bit of it here. It may be difficult to see, but where this bumps in at 45 degrees and it's sort of counterpart over on this side, this is the start of the on-street parking.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like to see, Tim, I don't know if you're suggesting this, but I'd kind of like to see the whole theme and flow of what they are anticipating on Riverside Drive. You know, and also I note that there, we have two council members missing tonight, and this is a critical piece to this, you know.
One thing, though, that staff did point out in the memo is that we, they want us to decide sooner rather than later, so.
Well, and that's something if we, as far as the timeframe, the impact, you know, it's three weeks to the next meeting, so I'm not sure if that translates into a three-week delay, or I guess it would depend too on what option is selected. If option A that's currently being designed is selection, then we probably would be okay. But if there's a change, it may slow down our ability to be under the same schedule that we're currently looking at.
Correct, and I don't think it's one-to-one. I don't think it's one week for one reason, so.
Yep.
I mean, I guess I'm prepared to, you know, vote tonight because I thought we were going to. But, you know, I think about, I guess I am not in favor of it for a number of reasons. But I believe that it is really something that can be managed to make people feel safer through landscaping, through the bricks, through the kind of roadway that we've been talking about, that we were going to, you know, the appearance of it and the materials that we're going to be using. You know, we all have wonderful opportunities to travel, and so while it may seem like a big intersection to us right now, we see a lot of these throughout the world, really. And I don't know any that I walked on that had a tunnel, you know, because they manage it through landscaping and other methods that you ultimately feel safe. And, you know, we talked about the same thing at 161 and Bridge Street, that no, you know, people were not going to pass, they weren't going to walk, we needed to figure out things to do, and, you know, we didn't end up doing anything at this point anyway. And I see people all the time now walking, you know, at grade level in those areas by large numbers. So I think that, and the traffic goes pretty fast on 161 there, you know, so I think that is, for me, as long as we have assurance and that we're going to use the landscaping and other methodologies to provide the traffic to slow down, that it's a natural... The other thing to remember is we're moving Riverside Drive. So what we're visualizing is not where Riverside Drive is right now. You know, it is going to be in a different location, which I think changes a little bit of what, you know, you're sort of envisioning of the traffic pattern.
I think that what Rick was saying, and I agree, is our ability to visualize the character of Riverside Drive, I think, might be the sticking... I think, might be the sticking point. Because right now, you know, you think about Riverside Drive and, you know, the traffic flies down and it's heavy and it's fast. And, you know, we're talking about the shift here, like in every other part of the district. And it just, it's difficult to imagine in today's world how it's going to function. But I think I'm inclined to agree with Merrily in terms of, you know, if we can get that fundamental character change and be assured that, you know, the traffic is still going to flow. I mean, we still, it's still going to carry a great deal of traffic. But it's going to have to be slowed down. And the character of the roadway is going to change sufficiently that pedestrians will ultimately feel comfortable. I mean, I hope we've, I hope they do. Because, you know, we're going to have this beautiful park on the one side and then a lot of activity on the other. And I'm guessing people are going to want to go back and forth quite a bit.
I can tell you, I'm struggling between B and C. A isn't even, I don't even see A as an option. I mean, if that's significant, at least we could get, I don't know whether we could agree to scratch A off the list. That might help, I don't know. But I'm getting persuaded back and forth every time somebody talks. But I don't, I can't see me spending all that extra money for option A.
Yeah, well, Greg, I agree with you. I mean, option A, I'm not all that enamored with. It's either B or C. But, you know, I mean, we're trying to create a walkable environment. So that, I lean toward C in that regard. However, you know, yeah, we're going to change Riverside Drive, but it seems to make some sense. Also, I can see the argument to have that tunnel. I, you know, yeah, we're supposed to vote on this tonight. There's a lot of times we schedule things for votes. But I still believe this is a crucial piece. I know it's going to delay some schedules and disappoint some people if we don't have a vote tonight. But there are two members of council that are not here, and this is our major project. And I think all seven ought to chime in on this.
And not that anybody cares. But, you know, I would imagine myself personally using the at-grade crossing. I mean, you know, that's a part of the, that's the part of the environment that I want to experience. You know, but I guess I'm trying to imagine other perspectives, that's all, and, you know.
And that was a lot of our discussion at staff level. The one really good thing that's come out of this is it's caused a lot of review and discussion. And we are in the same place you are with regard to option A. We believe it's unnecessary. Option B, we looked at that. And in part, the tunnel or the underpass option was considered because we did get a lot of concern expressed by residents with crossing Riverside Drive. And so this, we were looking at this as another way to provide access for those people that may not be comfortable. But we also had the same debate that you all are having with regard to, our goal is to create a walkable environment, and the thought is it will change. And if we implement elements that cause that, we should be able to create that environment. Then we had the discussion, but this is really the only time that we get to make this decision. Because to go back and retrofit, that's when it probably would be your much larger number. So, we agree, we've had a lot of debate, and not everybody on staff agrees with what the options are. So the reason that we looked at option B was the fact that we thought it did address an issue and a concern that we'd heard from residents and that it is the one time to do it. But we did have a lot of support and individuals who felt it is unnecessary because of all the things that you all have mentioned. And with the addition of the on-street parking north of John Shields, I think that made some people feel better about that. Because that was one of the big concerns expressed, was the southbound traffic. And when will it start to slow as far as coming into the Bridge Street District?
I guess, just as we're having this discussion, it occurs to me, because I oftentimes drive that stretch of, I guess it would be Long Street by the North Bank Park, coming into town.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, it occurs to me that maybe the utilization of those parking spaces depends upon the time of day. In other words, you know, the people's perception of the relative safety of crossing Riverside may vary depending upon the time of day. You know, it may be different, you know, on a weekend, you know, versus morning or evening rush hour. You know, I mean, I guess I'm, usually it's in the morning when I'm going by North Bank Park. And so you, you know, you're not going to see many users there, anyway. So, I mean, I don't know that that's a fair evaluation. But if that makes any sense, you know, I think that, you know, people's perception of crossing, you know, you know, could vary depending on the time of day and obviously traffic and so forth. I mean, you know, people, I think understandably, you know, would feel more comfortable, I think, you know, crossing at grade on a Saturday afternoon, you know, versus, you know, crossing at grade, you know, at 8:00 on a weekday morning.
Can I ask just one other question? It doesn't show on here. Would there be steps on the Riverside in B and C? Would there be steps so that, for Tim's example, you'd have the option going up the steps and crossing the grade or going through the tunnel? Because on C, there's no steps at all, and I would assume there's steps somewhere.
Yes, in both B and C, ultimately, when the park gets developed, if you cross the street at grade, you'll have both a ramp and stairs to get you down to the park level. So regardless of which tunnel selection or no tunnel that we make, there will be both stair and ramp accessibility from grade, from street, down into the park.
So that, in part, I was envisioning, you know, for some people, if you're coming from the west, traveling east, you know, that to some people, it might seem more of a natural, I don't know if transition is the right word, but natural route to go through that tunnel, you know, as opposed to, you know, because of the grade change. So, to whoever's point it was with respect to, you know, seeing a bigger picture, you know, I think it might be also helpful, you know, if we could see, you know, what's going to exist, you know, between Riverside Drive west to the river and, I guess, to the other side of the river, including the pedestrian bridge and so forth, that might help us imagine better.
Yeah, I think so, too. And, you know, I'm wondering, will people, you know, go out of their way? If they're uncomfortable crossing Riverside Drive, will they be uncomfortable enough to go out of their way to find the tunnel and cross under there? And then, you know, to points east, wherever they are along there? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
So the piece of information.
And that everybody's suggesting, I guess, that we need, that we don't have tonight. So that hinders our ability to vote on it tonight, is it in context to the area? That otherwise, we have all the information we need.
Okay.
So we can provide basically a higher view of the area. So you can see where the connections are made and what it may look like with regard to parking and the green space.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, and the future, you know, roadway locations, how they're going to be controlled, how the intersections are going to be controlled, you know, is it, you know, stop sign coming into Riverside Drive? And, or is it a light, you know, where the bridge locations are, et cetera? That would be helpful.
Are there going to be dedicated left turn lanes here?
In the future, when the John Shields Parkway Bridge goes across, you will have a dedicated left turn if you're northbound on Riverside onto that bridge. Those lanes, I believe, are not going to be installed day one, though, until they are. Those lanes will be installed, okay, just no one will turn on them because there's no bridge there.
Right. But I guess, I guess my question is, you know, to what extent that affects the pedestrian crossing?
That's a good point.
You know what I'm saying? When you're, when you have that dedicated left turn, anyway.
Yep.
The dedicated left turn is really probably a benefit. I think when you don't have dedicated left turns, that's when you see more people shooting the gap on the yellow to try and get through, past oncoming traffic. So I think in some ways, dedicated left turns are a positive in terms of what the expectations of the pedestrian and the motorists.
Okay.
We'll provide the additional information for the December 8th meeting.
Very fine. Thank you, thank you, Darren. Okay, Marcia, any comments?
Staff comments, there was a memo in your packet with regard to the grounds of remembrance. And we did provide displays or samples of the paver as well as the, what would be the path. And we don't need a decision tonight. We have time to implement the decision. If you want to take a chance or have a chance to take a look at this a little more closely. And I know John and Mike both have had a lot of interest in this. So we're okay waiting till the next time. But we just wanted to make sure you are aware that we have the samples here this evening.
Yeah, I read the memo, and in fact, I was going to bring it around a roundtable if you didn't bring it up. And well-written. The only thing I'd like to add to this, you know, we have that signage out there on Dublin Road. Were we contemplating doing something with that signage, like with this? I think that's.
That might be a good idea because it is difficult to see.
I would ask that we include that into that piece as well.
We can check to see what we can and how we'd go about that and get that back to you.
Fred? Okay, thank you.
The only other item that I don't know if anybody else was going to bring up, but the memo with regard to the villages at Kaufman Park condominium association, and if that's something council wants to discuss this evening or?
I wonder if we could put that, put this item for discussion at the next meeting. The individual who is the HOA representative was not able to be here tonight, didn't have time enough to get here. Is that?
That's fine.
Okay.
It seems fair.
Yeah, okay.
Well, I mean, are they going to provide us more information than we have here?
No, not necessarily. But I think they'd like to be here for the discussion and maybe talk about what they're facing.
You know, that's fine with me. But I guess I'm still trying to understand what is our criteria for taking over things? You know, I'm always confused when an association comes and says, well, we don't have enough people to pay for it now. You know, and so you said you need to pay for it. So what prohibits all of the associations from not coming forward and saying, well, our profile of people who have purchased the housing is different, and so they can afford this? You know, because our other costs have gone up and things like that.
And that is our concern at staff level. In the case of this one, and I don't want to start having the discussion, but part of the issue and part of our policy that we set years ago when we looked at, was it fair or not, was looking at what was approved for the overall development. In this case, what was approved for the overall development, we think is fair. It's just the fact that they only have 11 of the 66 or whatever it is currently living there that makes it difficult for those who live there now. And part of our discussion at staff level was, but that could always happen in some other development with regard to the success of selling the lots or the units or if there, you know, another recession and there are issues of foreclosures and things like that. So we agree that it is a concern because we have a lot of areas that are maintained by the HOAs over the years that have been established. And it would be a significant change in practice and an additional cost for the city.
One thing, I don't, I guess I'd really, you know, rather have this discussion when the residents are present, is the extreme nature of the cost per unit. We have talked in the past about when we've provided relief before, we've looked at what is a fair and average sort of number for homeowners' associations to pay. And if they're, you know, above that amount because they're maintaining, you know, significant portion of city land relative to the number of individuals, then we've looked at providing relief. And, you know, that number, I think, has been, you know, $150 a year, $200 a year, somewhere in there as being, you know, a quote-unquote "fair." In this case, you know, the monthly dues are $375 and, you know, per month. And the cost associated with mowing city land is $768 per year, per unit, which seems, you know, quite a bit above what any other neighborhood is paying. And they have acknowledged that.
Well, we're starting to talk about the.
We are starting to talk about it, but I just, you know, it is, this is a very different sort of a situation from an amount standpoint and from a number of homes.
Sure.
Versus what, you know, they will have ultimately. And they acknowledge that in the future, they'll be in a better position. And they don't expect, you know, relief in perpetuity.
But, you know, I think Merrily does bring up a good point. We don't seem to have, you know, I mean, I cannot recite a criteria or a policy that we have other than if a homeowner association is deemed in trouble or has unanticipated expenses, they can always petition city council. And I'm not putting words in your mouth, Merrily, but I would like to see some kind of criteria set forth so we can make it very clear as to what areas we will consider and what areas we're not going to touch.
And we can bring back the information that was, I can't remember. It's been many, many years ago that.
There was a criteria that we discussed.
The other thing is that just in the last three days, it just happened, by happenstance, happened to be in conversations, not related at all to this, of people that were telling me what their fees are for their homeowners' association. Trust me, nobody I've talked to is paying $150. So whatever those numbers were, they're too old for us to be making decisions based on that. $375 per unit is actually not uncommon, that between 250 and up. And I'm not saying that it shouldn't have anything to do with this. But I'm just saying that I think that we have a lot of old information that we're continuing to repeat compared to what people are paying in today's world because of the amount of land that many of our homeowners' associations are responsible for.
And is it public land or is it private land? And that's the other question.
Well, they're public land. It's just that we, you know, over the years have, they've been willing to take it over, you know.
Yeah, and one of the things, you know, when the land, when the reserves were set up through the process, it's in the city's name. One of the reasons is that we can file for tax exemption, and therefore there aren't property taxes on the reserves. So that's one of, a lot of cases, it's in the name of the city but maintained by the HOA.
Okay, well, maybe you can bring something back. You know, maybe one of our standing committees ought to look at this. I mean, we did several years ago, and. Is that, no, I don't think.
I think it's the council.
I think it was one of the councils. You know, maybe the Community Development Committee or the Public Services Committee. I don't know which one it would fall under, but strikes me, maybe one of those could, you know, take a look at that. Anything else, Marcia?
That's it.
Okay. Okay, I guess we'll get into council committee reports. Amy, planning and zoning?
Well, in addition to all the things that we discussed earlier with regard to the Bridge Street corridor code, we heard a little case the other night called Rivera. And there was a lot of public interest in that case. There was an overflow crowd. There were people outside this room watching the proceedings on television. So it was very, very well-attended. Planning Commission did vote to table the application. We had a number of concerns about the application relative to the community plan, architecture, layout, size of lots, density, tree protection, all kinds of concerns with regard to that. And so that application has been tabled, and I guess the ball's in the developers' court at this point.
I guess stay tuned for more.
Yeah, it'll be back.
Okay, I don't have anything with the administrative committee. John's not here for the Community Development Committee. Merrily, finance?
Yes, that's your, I think everybody has.
Does everybody have this memo at their place regarding follow-up answers to questions we had at our November 12th budget workshop meeting? Everybody has this? Okay, so you can review that at your leisure. I think it answered the questions pretty specifically that were raised. One thing, we are going to have the budget on our December 8th council meeting for approval. But in talking with both council members, some council members, as well as Marcia and Angel, I thought tonight what I'd like to do so that they can present us with a budget that we are most likely prepared to approve on December 8th, that one of the primary changes in the budget was really additional staffing. As you know, we've been very conservative over the last five to eight years on adding staff. And many of the positions over the last five years that have gone unfilled have actually been eliminated. have actually been eliminated from the table of organization. And so, we have this time, for the first time in a long time, some requests for some additional positions. And so, tonight, what I would like to do is to go through the positions and say yes or no, to actually have a vote, the council members here, on whether or not you want this position included in the budget that we ultimately get. We had a lot of discussion at our two meetings about each of these positions, so we have an understanding of what each of them is expected to be performing, and whether or not we view that 100% of them, or any, whatever percent should go ahead, move forward for our December 8 meeting. So, at the top, we have, we start with...
At the outset of this conversation, I guess I would just like to make a comment that, you know, throughout these budget documents, you know, I saw references to, I believe it was pre-2009 staffing. And, you know, obviously, we experienced a recession and so forth, and, you know, we adopted a more conservative approach and so forth. But I, and I'm not suggesting this is what staff is recommending, you know, or implying or whatever else, but, you know, I don't think that it necessarily follows, you know, that that's the benchmark. You know, that whatever staffing level existed in 2007, for example, or whatever, is the benchmark by which, you know, we measure, you know, necessary staffing levels today. Or, you know, per department. I mean, you know, there could be a greater or lesser, you know, demand within a particular department, you know, because conditions have changed today, you know, relative to five, six, seven, eight years ago. So, anyway, I just wanted to, you know, to the extent I saw that reference...
I'd like to also bring something up. I'm on the finance committee, and this is the first I'm hearing of this. We sat for two weeks and had a discussion, and, you know, where every department came before us. We were, we sat there, we asked questions, and now it's coming back tonight. That's kind of a surprise, folks.
No, actually, I said at the beginning of the meeting, of the very first finance committee meeting, that while we were reviewing and the request, the personnel request, we weren't approving just because they were bringing forth these positions. That we were listening to what they had to say, we were reading what they had to say, but moving to the next department did not say that we were approving their request as a whole.
Okay, but, okay, that's fine, but at the same time, I did not hear anybody during those hearings object to the number of positions that were being suggested to be filled, or to eliminate any, or to add to those. So, I'm kind of surprised by this, but if, you know, if you want to go through this exercise, that's fine.
Yes, I do. And I'd like to also comment that on Tim, on what you're saying, I agree with what you're saying. I think that what makes me more comfortable with what the requests have been is that, first of all, I think those levels a few years ago are higher than what they're even, if I remember, I don't have my big book here with me today. But, you know, we have some new people as department heads, or with the administration has changed its organizational structure, and the people now have been able to do some analysis of what's right and, you know, what is more efficient, given our land, how much land we have now through annexations and elsewhere, the, you know, sort of now going back and redoing some of our properties and everything because of the length of time we've had them. So, I have a little bit more comfort level, at least, in what you're saying, not doing what, you know, not going and just saying, "Well, okay, let's just add back in those positions," or get back up to those numbers we had at some point in time. Just, that's just me personally.
Greg?
Can I just ask a quick question? And I'll just use the police as an example. For example, if the police are requesting a couple of new positions, and we were to approve the budget that they proposed next week, wouldn't, like, for example, if we disagreed with two additional police officers, and we voted tonight, we don't want to have two additional police officers, wouldn't that change the budget that we had?
Right, that's what the staff then would bring us without those, you know.
Yeah.
Otherwise, see, so if tonight we say no to these two police officers, then what we're going to get to vote on will not have them in it. If we don't want to do this, and if you want them to bring the budget back to us with all the positions that are in it, then we either approve the budget as a whole, or we disapprove it because we're not in agreement with one or more positions.
I guess, and just using, continuing with my example of the police, if, for example, I were going to say, "I don't think we should have two additional police officers," before I would say that I would want the chief to stand up and tell me what the impact of that decision would be, and I guess I thought that's what we did at the budget hearing. Like, that was the time that we would have asked him, "Well, what would happen if you didn't get your two additional police officers?" I just don't feel comfortable second-guessing these numbers independently, separate and apart from the numbers that they were tied to. Am I not making any sense?
No, I agree with what you're saying, and if we could just clarify, too, you know, we take very seriously adding positions, and I think the references that we made at the beginning of the budget meeting was, we actually, the 2015 budget actually has three less full-time positions than we had 10 years ago in 2006. Just as a reference point, that we do look at, even today, as positions become vacant, we don't just automatically fill them, we evaluate, is it still a position that's needed, or is there a different position needed, or do we need no position at that level? So, we are trying to make sure that we take a hard look anytime there are vacancies. And as Merrily mentioned, for example, in public service, Megan was able to come in and evaluate overall in the department, and made a lot of changes within the different work units, but the net effect was zero new full-time staff. So, you know, I agree, personnel is one of your most costly expenses, and we take that very seriously as far as any positions that we add in the budget, and feel that these are the positions that are needed in order to continue to provide the services that the city provides.
I guess for me, it's, maybe it's a question of process. I very clearly remember the comments that Merrily made, you know, with respect to reserving the right, you know, to make some different recommendation at the conclusion of this budget And if in hindsight, you know, I mean, I don't, process-wise, I don't know what we could have done or said at the second and final budget hearing, or whether we should have. I guess I anticipated that there would be some opportunity to make a comment and not, you know, an up and down on the entire budget. You know, if that was the case, you know, I'd want an opportunity to rewind here, insofar as, you know, my views, I mean, and, you know, forgive me if I wasn't clear enough, you know, but anybody that sat through the budget hearings and didn't deduce from my comments where I would not add a position, I, you know, I thought I was fairly direct, but perhaps not.
And one other item, just so councils aware, there were positions that were requested by different departments and divisions that were not recommended as part of the administration's proposal to council. So, it's not like any position that the departments request, they automatically get rolled in and presented to council. Our job, we believe, is to vet those requests before we bring them to you, and then we realize you all have the opportunity to evaluate and determine whether or not you agree with us or not. But, I mean, I think we have a pretty responsible budget that addresses the needs of the city and the staffing that's needed to implement the services that we provide.
I guess I want, I also want to be clear, you know, that I'm not suggesting, you know, that staff, you know, did not approach this carefully, thoughtfully, and conservatively. I mean, staff always has, you know, but I don't, I don't think you or anybody else is suggesting this, but what is the point of us, you know, hearing all this if it's a fait accompli approval?
Right, and I agree, and that's why, when the issue came up, I asked Merrily if she would be willing to ask council if we could discuss this this evening, so that we didn't prepare the budget either as-is, or if we took all of the positions out and prepared that budget, and then council added positions back in. So, we didn't want to do the work twice, basically. And plus, it just creates confusion having the different documents out there. So, that's why we asked that it be discussed this evening. So, once we get direction from council, then we'll have it ready for the December 8 meeting, the final budget document.
Well, for those of us where this is a surprise, I guess on December 8, we can, we can do something with the budget that day, too. Is that what...
And you can, and at any point in the year, there can be adjustments made.
Yeah. And we're missing two council members tonight, so, okay, kind of a surprise, Merrily, but go ahead and make your motions, and we'll vote on them.
I'm totally confused at this point. You're, you know, you keep saying, "Oh, this is a surprise to you, this is a surprise to you," and, you know, it's not a surprise, really, and if we would...
Really, it is, because you didn't call me and talk about this. We sat there for two weeks through a budget, and after each department, you went on to the next one.
And I guess that, yes, and like I stated...
Now, if there were issues at that time, that seems like that would have been the time when you had all seven of us there to talk about it.
And I...
You haven't talked to everybody on this council since then.
I stated that, what I had said at the council meeting, at the...
Now, to the bottom.
Yeah, and I said what I said at the finance meeting, and I agree with Tim, that perhaps the best thing would have been for, at the end of the second meeting, to go back through, like we have here, the list of positions and say yea or nay. We didn't choose to do that, so I guess we'll wait till December 8, and we'll do what we need to do on approving or disapproving the budget.
Very well.
Having said that, though, I just want to, you know, I think I missed a council meeting in September. I mean, this is an important decision, I understand that, but, you know, perhaps I would have preferred that certain votes not be taken in my absence. I mean, you know, what is the, what is the, what are the considerations for when we vote or don't vote in somebody's absence?
Well, I, you know, that's a good question, Tim, but it just strikes me, with a surprise vote on a budget, which is probably the most important thing that this council does, and two members not present, it strikes me in the interest of fairness and full representation that this is considered by all members of council. I'm going to move on. Public service, Amy, do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question for clarification?
Yeah.
At this point, then, at staff, what we would, what we would do is prepare the budget document as we have presented, and then if on December 8, there is a position or something that wants to be adjusted, then we'll come back to council subsequently with any of the adjustments from the appropriation standpoint to reduce any of those requests.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Board of Education, Greg, anything to report?
This meeting was the...
Dr. Hoadley, we went over just general things, that was a pleasant conversation, nothing specific to report, no.
Okay, thank you. Merrily, with morphine?
No, but I do want to say that, in light of your conversation, Rick, that because Mike and John are not here, that you don't want things voted on, then I think that in the review process, Marcia, of the agenda each time, we need to know which items are not going to be voted on because members aren't present. Because it's not fair that only certain things now, we've never had this policy before. So, if this is the new policy, then I think it's only fair that if I happen to need to be absent, then I should be able to say, you know, "Well, I'd rather you didn't vote on this, because I'm not there to give my opinion."
Well, Merrily, I'm not trying to create a new rule here, only that I think something as important as the budget should be voted on by all council members.
Well, I guess, you know, I heard staff say that they wanted us to vote on this, and I, you know, think that we should vote. I mean, we had this discussion at Planning Commission. You know, there was an individual, a couple individuals who wanted, you know, meetings moved, because they knew that in their personal schedule, they were not going to be able to make a meeting. It's like if you have quorum, you know, whatever business that's brought before the commission on that night, you know, you consider the, consider the vote, and, you know, I don't know, you know, how we're going to do this budget. I mean, this is a different situation than we've had before in terms of adding, you know, a number of new positions, and the numbers were, you know, larger in a lot of departments than we had seen before. It was a very, you know, a different budget, really. And, you know, we've never seen, you know, this many new positions. So, I, you know, I guess I'd be in favor of voting this, just for the point of staff clarity, and, you know, the ability of staff to do what they need to do to bring us a budget that we can vote on.
Just so I understand procedurally, if we were to go through each one of these and a decision was made, up or down, and then we came back on December 8, and there were seven people here and not just us, couldn't we amend and change it and put it right back in?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to unders...
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what would happen.
Yes, and you could, I guess our concern is preparing the documents and making sure we prepare the documents that are accurate. And once the document is prepared and gets presented to council, then going back and making the changes to have a good document that is available is much more difficult, and it's duplication of work. So, that's the only thing that we were looking at, trying to make sure we had clarification this evening, if we could.
Yeah.
But we will move forward and prepare the document as-is, and we'll wait for the December 8 review and adjustments.
Yeah, and just, I'm sorry to belabor this, but, you know, consider the theoretical scenario, you know, where you have a certain number of council members sitting up here considering a budget in November or December of a particular year, when their term's ending, and, you know, they're not coming back. And, you know, I mean, there are all different kinds of scenarios that you can imagine. You know, I certainly agree with you that, you know, the budget is an important consideration. There's no question, and, you know, but I think each and every one of us, you know, could imagine different agenda items, you know, where, you know, they would prefer that a vote not be taken in their absence. And that's all.
Okay. Greg, were you through with your comment?
I am.
Okay. Okay, well, let's move on to council roundtable. Tim?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Greg?
Marcia, the clearing on the Wallace track, I saw that it would take two weeks. Do you know when that's going to be done?
As long as we didn't hear any concern this evening, I'm not sure. Fred, you know how long that will take?
Once, once they get in there, it's not, it will be measured in probably just days. It's, we've got some process we have to go through to get them in there, so, but it's not long-term. Once they start ripping and tearing in there, it won't take long.
Is there anything you need us to do, or is this just to let us know that it...
It's just to let you know, and if we had any feedback, that you had any concerns, we would address that, but if not, we'll move forward.
Hoping it'll solve a number of problems.
We're hoping, and prepare the site for future development, whatever it is.
And the only other thing I had, I know we've talked a lot, people ask me a lot about the sewer and water. Do you know when that issue would come back around?
The sewer and water?
Yeah.
Actually, we're going to, we need to look at calendars and try to come up with a timeframe. You know, I don't know if council's, the timeframe for December, if there's any timeframe, or if we want to look at January to start looking at a potential date.
In the maps that I have, the color coding is obviously very helpful. Is that on the website, so that if people were affected, that they could click and see those color-coded maps?
I don't know that it is, but we can, we can get it out there.
Is there a way we could get that done? Because I was thinking about trying to send this to the people that are asking me about it, because the color coding is what makes it a helpful document. If maybe I could just direct them to the website, that would maybe be helpful.
Okay, and we'll look to make sure that, I mean, we've gone through and tried to make sure they're updated, but... sure they're updated, but if we're going to put it out there for the public, we'll take a closer look at that.
Okay, great.
And then we'll look at a timeframe in January.
Thank you very much, Marcia, that's all, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Amy, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, Merrilee? Okay. Only comment, notice that tomorrow morning, at 7:45 over Crown Plaza, we have our leadership briefing and update with respect to the I-270 US-33 exchange. I think it'll be very exciting, looking forward to that. And I think that's about all, so we are adjourned.